Welcome, everyone. I now call the December 2nd, 2025 Regular City Council Meeting to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. At this point, it will take a moment to take roll call of the council members by position number. Please say here when the city clerk calls your name.
Councilmember Zornz. Mayor Thompson.
Here.
Councilmember Alderks.
Here.
Councilmember Kurd.
Here.
Councilmember Menke.
Councilmember Dodd.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Alcabra.
Here.
All present with the exceptions of Councilmember Zornz and Councilmember Menke, who are absent and excused.
Thank you. First up on our agenda is meeting agenda approval. Are there any changes to the meeting agenda? Councilmember Kurd.
Yeah, Mayor. In light of how many folks in attendance tonight are likely here to comment on the resolution, AB 25-214, I'd like to propose moving that up closer to the start of the meeting.
Could we move that right after public comment? In between public comment and reports? Fantastic.
If you need a second, here's a second.
I have a motion in a second. City clerk, do we need to do this? Okay.
Sorry. Hot me off guard there. Yes, please say yes or no when I call your name. Councilmember, Mayor Thompson.
Yes.
Councilmember Alderks.
Yes.
Councilmember Kurd.
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Alcabra.
Yes.
Passes 5-0.
I'm writing it down, too, but when I miss it and forget, you can remind me. All right, next up is public engagement opportunities. Bothell Prepared Disaster Preparedness Classes. You can learn how to respond to disasters no matter where you are. Bothell Prepared teaches disaster response basics, what to expect, how to prepare yourself and your family, and how to work through, work together to make it through. It's on Saturday, December 6th, from 10:30 to 11:30 a.m. We also have Startup 425 Accelerator Demo Day. You can celebrate innovation and join our cohort of startups as they showcase their hard work and vision. You'll hear from dynamic founders as they pitch their companies and unveil the businesses they're bringing to life. It's Monday, December 8th, 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. here in council chambers. We have the Park Project Open House. You can join the City of Bothell to learn about the Park at Bothell Landing Improvement Program, hear from city representatives, get a progress update on the project, ask questions, and chat with the project team. That's Thursday, December 11th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. in council chambers. Next up is public comment. The city has accepted public comment and writing, as well as accepted signups for those who wish to speak at tonight's meeting. Written comments submitted to the city clerk no later than 3:00 p.m. today were forwarded to all city council members and are part of the record. When the clerk calls your name, you'll have three minutes to speak. Please note that council will receive your input, but we do not engage in discussion of these topics. Staff will make notum of items requiring follow-up. City clerk?
Thank you, Mayor Thompson. Before I get to the people who signed up to speak live, I will, I will note that we received a number of written comments. The first one was from Courtney Kayler regarding the critical areas ordinance. We also heard from Ann Agard against the critical areas ordinance, and Mark Swanson wrote in regarding climate action. We also received 11 written comments in support of the resolution for immigrant rights. Those came from Helen Gable, David Maxfield, Lori Dunham, Nancy Anaker, Carol Sullivan, Jeremy Tadros, Jilda Nettleton, Eileen Harrisonowitz, Laura Kempfler, Libby Carr, and Nancy Hanson. So that's what we received written. For live comment, I have, the first speaker I have signed up is Paul Dunham. Mr. Dunham, are you here? Please step to the podium, state your name for the record, and you'll have three minutes.
Hello. Yeah, my name's Paul Dunham. I'm here to state my support for the resolution affirming Bothell's support for immigrants and endorsing state laws that promote dignity, safety, and equity. My next sentence is much longer than that. I've lived in four states, two college towns, and worked several decades in tech industries. I've met and befriended people from Mexico, El Salvador, Argentina, Brazil, Canada, Germany, Lithuania, Armenia, France, Iceland, Scotland, Greece, Cyprus, Lebanon, Iran, Iraq, Morocco, Algeria, Niger, South Africa, Moldova, Uzbekistan, India, Nepal, Japan, China, Taiwan, Vietnam, Cambodia, Laos, Philippines, and New Zealand. These are just the ones I can recall off the top of my head. All were fine people I felt privileged to know and welcome into my community. They came to find a better life than what was available to them where they were born, and they are generally more appreciative of the freedoms they have in the U.S. than those of us who were born here and may tend to take for granted. They are hardworking people who raise their children to do the same. This is the stuff this country is made of. I'm a melting pot mongrel who can only trace a portion of my immigrant heritage to an Irish couple who came here seeking relief from the potato famine, but that makes me no more of an American than all my neighbors whose parents moved here or who did so themselves. To our neighbors who are descendants of indigenous peoples, the rest of us are the invaders. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Lori Dunham.
Okay, so my name is Lori Dunham. I live here in Bothell, and I fully support the resolution to protect our immigrant neighbors. And this is just a few of the reasons. So I've known and loved many immigrant friends and neighbors. My father spent the last eight months of his life in an adult family home right here in Bothell that was started by a nurse who was an immigrant to this country, and it's still going today, 15 years later, beautiful adult family home. The last few days of his life, I was there with him by his side, and the last night, I was tired and I went home, and a very loving caregiver was there. She assured me she would be right by his bedside, and she was holding him, his hand when he passed. And she was from Africa, came over on a voucher kind of lottery sort of system. So I'm not afraid of any of my immigrant neighbors. I'm not afraid of being harmed by an immigrant. I do, however, see many examples in our society of how greedy people cause great harm. And I want to speak specifically about Trump's ICE. I am the proud daughter of that father who was a 20-year veteran detective, and he never wore a mask, only the bad guys wore masks, and he would have been appalled at what is happening on our streets. The violent way that ICE is acting is traumatizing to both the immigrants and to everyone in the community. So it's not how public servants should behave, it's not proper humane, it's not a proper humane way to deal with immigration. And these ICE actions call for all of us to stand up and say no, so please pass the resolution, which I'm sure you will. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Roger Ricks.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Roger Ricks. My comments relate to the proposed critical areas ordinance scheduled for adoption tonight. Although this testimony comes late, and that reflects that I just learned about it recently, including the elimination of variances and also the addition of vegetative buffer standards. I've been involved in a development of a project in Bothell for over two years now, and these will severely impact this project and probably derail it. First on variances, variances are a narrow last resort mechanism, relief mechanism used by nearly every city in King, Anderson, Homish County, and advocated by Washington Department of Ecology, who gives guidance that they're an acceptable tool as long as they're narrowly tailored and maintain no net loss, like the current code offers. They exist because many parcels with critical area constraints would otherwise have no viable development pathway, including many remaining parcels in Bothell. Eliminating variances removes the only practical relief valve and leaves only the extremely difficult to prove reasonable use exception, which is rarely met. The outcome conflicts with the comprehensive plans' call for predictable permitting and redevelopment of constrained parcels. Second, the vegetative buffer standards contain structural conflict within it. They require the removal of all existing improvements in a full buffer restoration whenever more than 1,000 square feet of impervious area is added, but the code may not give credit for that required restoration. This creates a circular obligation, restore the buffer, but then still provide additional mitigation on top of it. That's costly, confusing, and hard to implement. The third point is fairness and reliance. Beginning in March of '24, city staff explicitly advised our team that they would support Title 14 variance before the hearing examiner. Relying on that guidance, we pursued the site plan review process for 19 months, submitted the application in December of '24. That included the city-supported variance and invested heavily on all the required technical reports. During the same period, city staff received a recommendation to eliminate variances and began advocating for their removal by July. Although this, yet this multiple review, we had multiple review milestones with staff, February, March, May, July, and September, this was never disclosed to us. And when we first learned in October 1 that critical area ordinance was, changes were imminent, far too late to redesign the project or redo the supporting studies or go through the hearing examiner and secure entitlements. Our application remains active today with just one outstanding item left.
Thank you, Mr. Ricks. Your time is up.
Okay, thank you.
Next up, we have Jeff Smith.
Good evening, Mayor Thompson and members of the council. I appreciate the chance to speak with you tonight. I want to talk about the council's consideration of amendments to Title 14 of the city code. I've had the opportunity to work with Mr. Ricks and his team as they move through the development process for a project in Canyon Park which faces significant constraints because of wetlands and their buffers. I agree with the points Mr. Ricks raised, and I also support the city's commitment to encouraging restoration and protection of critical areas. Bothell is a vibrant, diverse, and evolving place, but the changes we see can be, can challenge our sense of continuity of what we know. It also is what drives us forward to the future we want. When people build responsibly, they're helping to create the results that these regulations are designed to achieve. In my experience, the best environmental results come from a combination of good regulations, thoughtful land development, real projects that make a difference on the ground. Without development, the intentions behind our regulations remain just that, intentions, not outcomes. Specifically, I want to address the change that would eliminate the variance mechanism. In the past, this tool has provided relief for property owners facing extraordinarily challenging site conditions. Mr. Ricks' proposal includes a variance, a variance application, and with the removal of this tool, his project faces existential challenges. However, as I read these amendments, the reasonable use exception will take the place of the variance. Approval of an RUE will be a staff-level decision. If the purpose of substituting reasonable use for variance is to make it simpler and more predictable for applicants and staff to arrive at consensus on properties like Mr. Ricks, well, then I'm all for it. And for this reason, I urge you to encourage and empower professional staff and department leaders to apply these rules in a way that truly achieves the desired goals, protection of environmental areas, and facilitating responsible development, outcomes that serve everyone's interests in this community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Ann Agard. I do not see Ann in the audience, nor is she online just yet. Next up, we have Mark Swanson.
So I'd like to request that the climate action plan be removed from the consent agenda tonight. It's anything but trivial, and the science has to be revisited. I think the, there should be another advisory group put together to revisit the science because it's insufficient. Have to hold it up. The Earth's temperature is slowly warming. We are naturally recovering from the little ice age that ended around 1850, when glaciers hit a 10,000-year-high, the highest glaciation in the Holocene period. That goes back 10,000 years. If you perform a statistical p-value analysis on Seattle temperature data, a null hypothesis is confirmed. The p-value, .008. In other words, CO2 concentrations are not causing warming of mean-high surface air temperatures and have not for at least the last 47 years, probably 100. So the Climate Action Plan says it will use the best available science, and yet it didn't. Why? Because it assumes that greenhouse gases are causing the global warming, causing the mean-high temperature warming. Well, the science is flawed. The empirical data that I used came from Monolo Observatory and Sea-Tac Airport. I put it together, did a statistical analysis, and it confirmed the null hypothesis. So it's not as complicated as it seems, but we have to follow the best available science and multidisciplinary science. That's what the state law requires, and we haven't. The legs, the foundation, have been knocked out from underneath the assumption of the Department of Ecology, the Climate Impact Group, and our own advisory group and the staffers who put together the Climate Impact Plan. Please remove it from the agenda. The science is flawed. It needs to be revisited. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Ann Agard.
Okay. I'm addressing the adoption of the critical areas ordinance. I spoke to you on October 21st, and the public hearing was closed immediately after I spoke. Since then, and in this agenda packet, there are a number of new documents that were not available at that time and comments. The first one has to do with the stream buffer for the type F, that is, the fish-bearing streams. In the code, it is listed as 125 feet, and in the FEMA document that was used by staff to depart from best available science, by still claiming that they met the needs of the City of Bothell, they specified a 175 feet. So this needs to be corrected. And the second part of this has to do with the vegetative buffer. The same FEMA document on pages 339, 342, 343, 344, and 345 referenced the reduction of type F streams, that is, the fish-bearing streams. If vegetated, can be reduced to 150 feet. However, and it says, the proposed CAO update will adjust the buffers, a 175-foot buffer for type F streams, with the option to reduce to 150 feet if vegetative standards are met. And it says these are consistent with GMA requirements, and it is a balanced approach that protects Bothell's streams, supports salmon recovery goals, and maintains development. However, the vegetative section allows this, allows the reduction to 100 feet if vegetated, the same reduction that is there for non-fish-bearing streams. So this is clearly an error. They're using the same report, the same justification, but coming to a different conclusion if the stream is vegetated. So I ask you not to adopt the ordinance tonight, to make the required changes, to make it consistent with the staff reports and the science that is being used at this point, the FEMA curve, and correct the ordinance before it is adopted.
Thank you, Ms. Agard. Appreciate it. We also have a couple members in the audience who have, in the virtual audience, who have raised their hands. I'm going to panel them in. First person I'm going to panel in is Nick, so please give me a moment to bring him in. Nick, can you hear me?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, please state your full name for the record, sir.
Yeah, thank you. My name's Nick Holland, and I work for Adamant Homes. I'm a local developer, and on the advice of Deputy Mayor Alcabra, I make this public comment in support of an email I sent to the council regarding the proposed critical areas regulations that are up for adoption tonight. And I took a read through the, the regulations, the draft regulations, and I think it supports the direction the community wants to go. I would only ask that you guys delay adoption of the regulations so, so that we could potentially get a project through, through the process that would involve a significant amount of public improvements. If the new regulations are adopted, our plans for, for our property in Bothell along 9th Avenue wouldn't be able to happen. So I would just ask that the council delay adoption for a few more weeks so that we could get an application in for our proposed project along 9th, which, as I mentioned, involves a significant amount of public improvement. Our plans are to develop a, a walking path along 9th for schoolchildren to walk to and from school, Crystal Springs Elementary, as well as anybody in the neighborhood to use. Our project also is going to involve a significant amount of utility improvements that will help the neighborhood. And so in support of my email, I make this public comment. Thank you.
All right. Next, we have Justin Buffard in the virtual audience. I'm going to panel him in. Go ahead. You'll have three minutes.
I am Justin Buffard. I wanted to say I appreciate the immigrant resolution. I'm an immigrant myself, having stepped off the preferable boat in 2010, and I have Bothell loan since 2010, 2009, 2008, and then 2010. So anyway, I'm back again to speak about development in Bothell. I've been trying to build on the back of my lot and some further updates so the council can just really understand the limits that people are having for infill development. So my catch-22 is, my original plan had a three, three units in the back, which would trigger frontage improvements, and that's not disputed. So that deal had to go away because the frontage improvements would be prohibitively expensive for somebody doing some small-scale development for me. What I've attempted to do is create either two different paths to add housing to the lot, and city staff interpretations are impeding that progress, and they appear to be contradictory to both the intent and the black-letter law of HB 1337. So the issue is, the frontage improvements would impact usability in my lot, as I would need to dedicate six feet, out of the goodness of my heart, with no remuneration to myself, for the protected bike lane, and that would make my driveway unusable at the old home. And then also, there's a disproportionate cost because there is a brand-new, non-protected bike lane that was installed in 2021, demanding the destruction of that functional driveway to add a 60-foot section on a 6,300-foot road, creating an isolated island that forces traffic to go up, merge, and then merge back onto the road, would give us probably maybe 30 feet of protected bike lane at best, and then would have to get redone anyway if the next guy comes along to make it cohesive. So it just doesn't seem to make a lot of sense, and it's extremely expensive, and it's actually, in my opinion, a bit more dangerous. So the alternative path I've been proposing was two principal units, so a single-family home in the back. So I've gotten confirmation that public works would not require frontage improvements by just a single-family home, which was my complaint last time. But I'm also trying to do better use of the land and create a detached ADU that would be a three-bedroom, 1,200-square-foot ADU as well. Staff is currently saying that BMC 14, 1214135 says I can only have one ADU because I'm, would be promoted to middle housing by adding the second housing unit, but this appears to be a direct violation of state law. RCW 3678-681 mandates that the city must allow at least two ADUs for any lot within a urban growth area that is, that allows for single-family homes, and my lot does meet that requirement. And RCW 3678-696 explicitly defines a principal unit as being a duplex, triplex townhome or other housing unit, which means that state law requires that you allow ADUs, two ADUs on any lot. So restricting the BMC, restricting the one ADU for middle housing types is in direct violation of state law. The Department of Commerce has issued guidance to the cities for HB 1337 compliance and states that duplexes, townhomes, triplexes have ADUs and that the minimum allowance is two ADUs per lot.
Thank you, Mr. Buffard.
And there's materials to that effect.
Thank you. Your time is up. Thank you for your comments. Is there anybody else in the audience who wishes to speak? Thank you. Please step to the podium. You can form a line if you like, and you'll have three minutes each. Please state your name for the record. If you are in the virtual audience and you wish to speak, please use the raise-hand function, and we'll panel you in after we have speakers in the, in the chambers. Go ahead, ma'am.
Oh, hi. Kathy Ferberche. I'm here in support of standing up for our rights in Bothell with this resolution. Thank you for providing us with another valuable tool to support our efforts as we canvass businesses and raise awareness about our rights. Our community recognizes that the City of Bothell is committed to creating a safe, welcoming, and lawful environment for everyone. A few residents in Bothell, and I am one of them, have come together to form Northshore Neighborhood Solidarity. Our group's mission is to learn about our rights so that we can effectively stand up to ICE if and when they come to Bothell. It is not only lawful, but also crucial to understand and exercise these rights. Presenting the resolution to the business owners, which we plan to do, helps establish our credibility and demonstrates that we're in alignment with the city's leaders' commitment to the safety for all. We have found that many businesses are concerned for their employees, delivery people, customers, themselves, and their neighbors. Educating ourselves and others about our rights helps calm fears and dispel rumors. It gives community members the tools they need to make a stand. For example, business owners and managers who have a right to remain, they have a right to remain silent even when approached and questioned by law enforcement. It is their right not to answer questions, to refuse consent for searches of their cars, belongings, or their personal, their person. If ICE enters a restaurant or business, employees have the right to move behind an employee's-only sign, and law enforcement does not have the authority to cross that boundary without proper cause. Business owners also have the right to request the name, the badge number, the agency the law enforcement offers to represent, to ask if they're ICE, and to inquire whether they have a warrant. It is lawful to document their actions with words and using your phone to film their behavior and narrate the activity. If a legal warrant is present, the person detained or named in the warrant loses their protections. However, that change- However, that changes everything. However, the warrant must include the individual's name, the address, the reason for the arrest, and to be signed by a judge. It is legal to ask us as a citizen to ask for the warrant, and in our experience, few ICE agents possess a valid warrant during these raids. It is essential for all staff members to be trained, I'm thinking about business staff, of these rights so that everyone knows how to respond calmly and confidently in such situations. Providing written materials or holding informational meetings empowers business owners and employees to act appropriately and protect themselves within the boundaries of the law. By fostering a culture which this resolution helps to create and prosper, we can create a preparedness, and our community can stand together.
Thank you, Kathy. Your time is up.
And solidarity.
Thank you.
And everyone's rights will be respected. Thank you.
Thank you.
I guess we have some support from the community. This took less than two days, a couple of hours, on Monday and Sunday afternoons at the library and one other location in the community.
Sir, could you state your name for the record?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm so well-known here. I forget sometimes. Ray Thomas, speaking in support of the resolution presented to the council this evening to support all our rights, including immigrants' rights, which they have the same rights as all of us, and that those rights should be protected, enforced, and supported. Kathy indicated, we think one of the greatest ways to build community is education. We're going to be out in the community soliciting more signatures in support of this resolution, educating people, and visiting. We will be back with other resolutions as the state develops its response to what's currently going on in our greater community and nation. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'll submit these names to the council.
My name's Michael Lowery. I've lived in Bothell for the past seven years, and I'm here in support for the resolutions supporting immigrant rights. I failed to prepare comments, but I just want to point out that there have been ICE raids in Issaquah kidnapping a mother in front of her preschool. There have been ICE raids in Redmond from a Panera and a Home Depot, raids in Kirkland. They'll be coming here if they aren't here already. Just earlier today, the Trump administration issued new guidance that immigrants from 19 countries, even if they're days from becoming citizens, are, they're pausing all of that, all of their immigration processes. And just this illegal regime continuing to attack immigrants who are part of our community, who have done nothing wrong, have never committed a crime, is just heartbreaking. And I know, like, this is a great step, this resolution is a great step, but it is a first step. There needs to be more concrete action. I realize that as a city, there's not a whole lot that the city can do on its own to fight back against this, but I do know that in Woodinville, Michelle Evans, city councillor there, is working to get a bill before the state legislature called the No Secret Police Act to make it a state crime and state tort whenever anyone's rights are violated by immigration officials, whether through ignoring paperwork, or wearing masks, or being too rough, or anything else. So I would ask, at the very least, that that be added to the city's legislative agenda. So, thank you.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Mica Campbell. I was not planning to speak tonight, but after reading the proposed resolution affirming support for immigrants and endorsing state laws that promote dignity, safety, and equity, I thought I would share some thoughts. I am a son who can trace my roots to immigrants, not my parents, but my parents' parents' parents', at least that far, and the line goes further than that, too. Every single person in this room will be able to, or maybe they can't, but at some certain point, they had ancestors who were immigrants to this country. I believe that is the case for every single person who lives here. Now, my family members who immigrated to this country worked extremely hard to get here. They worked really hard, and some of the places where they were living were just full of tyranny. For example, my great-grandparents were living in the country of Russia. They had been invited from the country of Germany to go over there, and they were farmers. But when they were, but when they saw that the communism was coming to that country, they recognized that there could be serious problems for them in the future. So they fled to America before they could face, before they would be facing those problems. So America was a welcoming place to them, and as a result, I'm here today, and I'm blessed by the country of the United States. But there are some people who are trying to get into the country of the United States and to have very hard times doing so. For example, I could tell you multiple stories, but just one I know of, a person from Japan who was trying to come over to the United States. She was engaged to be married to a person who is a citizen of the United States, and they were waiting until this Japanese lady to come, could come over to marry. That process took many years till she finally could become, till she finally could be able to fill out paperwork, get everything in, and to be able to come over and stay, and to, to come over here and stay as a resident. Now, something, my, my point for saying these things is I'd like, before you pass this, I'd like you to add something, that it is important to help those who have been extremely hardworking at coming here, in coming here to the United States legally. Very important. It is very important that everybody can have the opportunity to try to come to the United States, and I really want people to come. I have many friends who are immigrants, but let's make sure that we are particularly welcoming to those who have worked extremely hard to come here in a legal manner. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. I have one person online, Shauna Buffard. I'm going to panel her in.
There we go. I'm now in. Hi, I'm Shauna Buffard. You guys all fairly well know my husband, Justin. I'm just popping in to finish some comments for him, just continuing in his thread about housing in Bothell and our ask to council, and that is, we would really love to be able to market our lot appropriately. We're ready to build housing in the city, and you guys claim to need it, and I know that you need it, so we have the land, the funding, and the intent. We've already had one deal fall apart, spent money towards pre-application with the city, and would really love council to intervene in two ways. One, direct staff to comply with HB 1337. Clarify that Bothell Municipal Code cannot be interpreted to restrict ADUs on middle housing lots more strictly than state law permits. A lot with two primary homes must be allowed, the state mandated, to ADUs. And two, provide relief on footage, or frontage. Direct Public Works to review frontage requirements for cases where improvements would render existing essential infrastructure, such as a driveway unusable, or where recent improvements, the 2021 bike lane, already exist. This would allow the original project, or something denser, to happen. Please do not force the underdevelopment of this land. I urge you to remove these artificial barriers and allow this housing project to proceed. Thank you so much. We really would love Bothell to have more housing, so I would really appreciate if you can listen and look at what Justin's been asking for and get this project moving. Thank you so much.
That is all I have. Thank you.
All right. Next up, we are going to do what is under Agenda Item 8. It's Agenda Bill 25214, the resolution affirming Bothell's support for immigrants and endorsing state laws that promote dignity, safety, and equity. City manager.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, City Council members. As you'll recall, at last, at your last meeting, which was on November 18th, the deputy mayor raised under pending agenda items, or projected agenda items, excuse me, bringing back a resolution, issuing a statement of support for immigrants and endorsing state laws that promote dignity, safety, and equity. Staff have taken a draft that was submitted by the community and worked, worked it a little bit to add, add to it, not take away. And here presenting that resolution to you tonight is Becky Range, our Assistant City Manager, who will walk you through and answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. And tonight I also have Anand Mantra Pagada sitting with me, our Human Services Coordinator, who's been doing a lot of work on this issue. Mayor, council members, as you know and you have heard tonight, there are many Bothell residents who have expressed concerns as federal immigration enforcement efforts are intensifying. We know that this is creating fear and impacting the well-being of our immigrant communities here. We've had a lot of Bothell residents that you've heard actually speak tonight who have been meeting and who have been working to support their neighbors. And as our city manager mentioned, they have asked that you also publish a statement of support. The resolution that's in your packet tonight, it does indeed provide affirmation of your support for our immigrant community. This includes refugees and asylum seekers. It also endorses state laws that promote dignity, safety, and equity. And above all, it acknowledges that Bothell is a better community with immigrants. Staff will continue to comply with the Keep Washington Working Act and the Courts Open to All Acts to protect rights and safety of all of our residents, and will not ask about immigration or citizenship status. This resolution confirms that we are committed to protecting privacy and data of all of our community members. It also commits staff to also share know-your-rights information with our local businesses and to share resources with our community groups and residents. Lastly, it does also confirm that we will continue to engage with and support the many nonprofits that are doing work with our immigrant communities and supporting them as best we can. We are happy to answer any questions that you might have tonight. We hope that we have captured what we have heard about this topic in the resolution, and if you have no questions, we ask you to consider formalizing these sentiments by adopting the resolution tonight.
If somebody would like to say something or make a motion? Councilmember Dodd?
Thank you, Becky, and Anand, and everyone who worked on this. I feel like it's a reflection of what we asked of you, and then beyond that, which is very much appreciated and needed right now, and I would like to move that we adopt the resolution as presented.
A second?
I have a motion from Councilmember Dodd and a second from Councilmember Kerd. Would anybody like to speak to the motion? Councilmember Dodd?
Thank you. I will be voting yes on this resolution. I appreciate the deputy mayor and community members bringing it up. I am someone who can both trace my ancestry back to a stupid degree, far beyond the American Revolution, but also to really nowhere, because people got here, and they were poor, and now I'm here. At some point, the Civil War destroyed some records. It is antithetical to everything about me and my ancestors' journey to where I was born in America to say that we would shut the door behind us and not welcome more immigrants. There is room in our hearts, there is room in our communities, and this was one where explaining the need for it, my son likes to ask me, I have a 10-year-old son, sometimes about city council stuff, sometimes he rolls his eyes and says no. But the idea that the neighbors and friends and family members we know who are immigrants would somehow not be welcome here was abhorrent to him. And I, if my 10-year-old gets it, then I think we're on the right path, and I'm really glad that we can do this, and I hope the community continues to reach out and let us know where else we can take action. I think that we have a lot of, a lot of heart and a lot of willingness to jump in where we can. So, thanks.
Councilwoman Roderick?
I'm very grateful that this resolution came from our community and that it was a group of citizens who came forward to say that this was necessary and important. You know, we up here on council can speak as elected representatives, but I think there is a power that is greater than our own when the community comes together and speaks on behalf of our, on behalf of people who are marginalized and being targeted. And so I'm very grateful for all the community members who came together. I look forward to seeing the petition. Thank you for your energy, your time, your commitment, and your care for, for immigrants that we share our community with, and I am happy to vote in support of this. So, thank you.
Councilmember Kerd?
Thanks. I'm also going to be voting in favor of this. I'm really grateful for the community-based organizations that are operating and training in know-your-rights. You don't inherently know your rights, and so how are people supposed to know when their rights are being confronted or taken away unless they're being trained? So thank you from the bottom of my heart to the people who are going and doing the frontline work of, of training and helping our community understand what their rights are so that they can be protected and we don't lose them. And thank you to city, too, because as a public institution, it's our job to uphold the rights of everyone who live here. And so want to thank you for your commitment and our collective commitment to doing better.
I would like to just echo all of the sentiments that I've heard up here from my colleagues and appreciate everybody that showed up to implore us to adopt this. Also appreciate the point, like, I am a descendant of immigrants, just like all of us who are not native. Like, I see no real functional difference between myself and somebody who is a first-generation immigrant. We all ended up coming from somewhere else, and we're all here because we want to be, because we love this place. And some of us love this place so much that they came here from somewhere else to get here, as opposed to like being born up the hill and just never moved very far away, like me. And this is a significant amount of people in Bothell. I think it was 22% of Bothellites are immigrants. That's over one in five. And over 10,000 of our neighbors are immigrants, along with our deputy mayor and another incoming council member. Their contributions to what Bothell is are so obvious, enormous, valuable. They're such a significant portion of our community, and I can't imagine Bothell without them, and I'm so glad they're here. I, I wish we lived in a world where this was an utterly unnecessary thing to do, because everybody felt that way, and it was obvious what they contribute to our community, but we don't. And as long as we live in a world where we need to say things like this, I'm really proud that I'm on a body with folks and a member of a community that wants to say things like this and wants to affirm the dignity and humanity of every single one of our neighbors, regardless of where they were born. So, thank you to everyone. Deputy mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. I will keep this brief. As the mayor said, 22% born outside of the United States, that was 18% a couple of years ago or something, you know? So the number of folks has increased, and when we say one in five, we're literally one in five, we're represented right here on the, on the dais. So I, which is about time that we have this, and we have another incoming council member who's going to also be an immigrant or first generation, I guess, and I want to thank the community for pushing really hard to do this. It's not easy to be somebody who's first or second generation. I know a lot of folks are descendants of immigrants, unless you're an indigenous folk, of the indigenous peoples. And, but the folks who are first or second generation are the ones who are feeling it the most nowadays, and it's regardless of whether you are, how you came into this country, everybody has to, as the mayor said, have to be treated with dignity and respect. to, as the mayor said, have to be treated with dignity and respect. And what we are seeing these days is that they're not being treated with dignity and respect, and it's a human right to be treated with dignity and respect. So, you know, unfortunately, as a council, I said I was going to be brief, but I guess I'm not going to be brief. As a council, as a city government, we can't do much, as we know, and, but we do, are very fortunate, right? We have amazing city staff, amazing police department, and emergency and law enforcement in our city, because we can only do so much. I was in a meeting with some state lawmakers yesterday, and the state can only do so much when there's a federal enforcement action. So, but we can do enough to slow down, at least make people feel like they're human, you know, they haven't been treated like human beings. So, I very much appreciate, you know, Becky and Anand moving on this very fast, very quickly, and bringing it up, and the hard work of our community members who are trying to spread the word. And I know this is one of hopefully many things that we do as just council members and staff and community members, really, because we're also part of the community. So, hopefully, we can move and make at least one person's life better with this, you know? So, that's all.
When somebody who's run for office says, "I'll be brief," never believe them. I think we're ready for a roll call.
If you please say yes or no when I call your name. Mayor Thompson?
Yes.
Councilmember Alderks?
Yes.
Councilmember Kerd?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Alcabra?
Yes.
Passes 5-0.
We're going to be here for a while, if you want to stick around. Next up, we are moving over to reports, and I'm going to kick it over to the City Manager. Or do we want to? Tell you what, it's 6:52. Let's come back at 6:57. We're going to take 5, and that'll give people a chance to file out without feeling like they're interrupting us. If you want to, you are welcome to, and I understand. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. And Council, I do appreciate the amended agenda. I think that was a great decision and a good way to start the meeting. Tonight, we do have one formal presentation, which we'll get to here momentarily, but just wanted to reflect on the fact that we are now somehow in December of 2025, which means we're almost to the year. And that also means that time is flying. So, it's, we're just one short week away from last year's meeting where he did adopt the 2024 Conference of Plan. So, that was pretty notable. I wanted to just raise that of, I received a question prior to the meeting starting about just some of the effects of what we have seen, and obviously, tonight, too, we heard some comments in public comment about what a particular project that is challenged, but we also have many stories of things that have gone well. I just wanted to note that as staff provided a snapshot of development activities throughout the year in September, we have committed to doing that every six months. And so that would put us towards the beginning of March, we might even hit in February. Because also, as part of the requirements of the city, along with updating our comp plan and everything, there's a requirement also of reporting out on some of the statistics and timelines of permitting, how many housing units we're producing and that sort of a thing. So, we are anticipating in our first quarter update on development activity of what we ended up seeing in 2025, we will focus on different middle housing types, what has been produced and is in the pipeline to provide more information, and we'll bring some information and statistics along that one. And if you have any questions, we'll be able to fill you in on that as well. So, just wanted to note that, and again, follow up on a conversation I had with a council member. Also, on the theme then of providing you information of, you get to adopt these policies and changes, it's always very helpful to see, so what effect does it add? So, tonight, we are getting an Economic Vitality Update from Ashish Joshi, our Economic Development Coordinator. Again, and he'll review that earlier this year, as you may recall, you adopted the Economic Vitality Update. And so we are pleased to provide some information. We're also, we're committed to providing information such as this to our business community as well. So, we'll be, we'll be sharing information with them along the way, but always like to share with our city council. So, with that, I'm going to turn things over to Ashish to walk you through what we've learned so far.
Thank you, City Manager. Thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council Members. As Kyle mentioned, we're providing an update today on some of the early work implementing the Economic Vitality Plan. That Vitality Plan was born from our council priority and part of the vision for 2040. And we made progress by adopting the first, city's first-ever Economic Vitality Plan with actions in July of this year and helping us move forward toward that work to enhance business growth. In regards to growth, looking at our region, growth is often measured in gross domestic product, which is consumer spending, business spending, government spending, and a few other items. And as we can see here, almost half of our, of that gross domestic product is from small businesses. And in Bothell, we see that those small businesses are spread throughout the city. And we also see our large businesses are clustered in several economic districts, whether it's Canyon Park in the north, North Creek, or downtown. And we want to support both of those groups and also the connection and interactivity between all those groups. So, that's a lot of the work that is the backbone of the Economic Vitality Plan. And we are, as a role as a city, we want to see where can we make the most impact to go toward that economic vitality? And whether it's a business that is, reaches a hurdle and we want to be able to support them. For example, we have a space company designing lunar landers. They are focused on that work. Permitting is a new language to them, so that, as they need to redesign, we're connecting them to our permitting department and having conversations, and conversations laid the way and made things smoother. Or in another case, a different type of business is a business that needs to connection to those ideas and reaching where they want to grow toward. An example of that is one of our pop shops, they are looking to get into distribution. They started small. They are, you can see some of their products in our stores in Bothell. And you can also see, next time you take a flight, you can actually see one of their products at the airport. So, reaching new frontiers is part of that work. And so, a lot of our progress you'll see in the attached tracker. And a lot of the work is some of that groundbreaking work, which you don't see many visible elements of that. But we do have a few small-scale visible elements you can see on our website, for example, and restructuring so that we can both give businesses the info as most efficiently as possible, but also tying with what we heard during the process of the plan. How can we show that Bothell is welcome to business for all and welcome to innovation as well? And then tools that help toward that as well. So, often, when you'll talk to a small business that may be in a rut or may hit challenges that have, and they've run things their own way and just they don't know what's going on, 12-question small business strength assessment can help create questions for themselves as they go through it. And then that breeds more questions and helps provide a direction of, if I want to grow my business, where should I start? Where are my strong, where are my challenges? And then build from there. And looking at what's next, so a teaser for something that will come back soon and with a lot more information is how can we pilot some work for our businesses to kind of raise their energy and bring vibrancy to our districts and align with our work that we do toward that as well? Another version of that is in Canyon Park, we've had some conversations with property owners, businesses, and as Canyon Park works to become more walkable, how can we create that energy ahead of time? Even with some of the areas that are not as walkable right now, how can we still kind of bring activities, the connections within those areas so that when we move forward next year with the Canyon Park SubArea Plan work, there, we, one, it's, we all move in that same direction and can hopefully help that process as well. So, all this work and more are continuing, and we're going to be providing periodic updates to the council. And also, to that end, some of the long-term metrics and outcomes, whether it's employment growth, whether it's gross domestic product like we saw earlier, we want to be able to update council consistently on that. So, happy to answer any questions and just to provide a huge thanks. A lot of this work is across the city, and we're fortunate that there's energy across that provide examples so that we, our city with a common purpose and lead toward that. Thank you all.
Councilmember Kerd.
Thanks, Ashish. I think that you're right on the money. There's a couple of things that really stood out to me in the presentation in the packet. One was just the transparency of the action tracker, helping show business leaders that Bothell is a good place to do business, and proving it with the numbers is one way that we can really help advance some of these goals. So, thank you for taking the lead on the action tracker. I think that's going to be helpful to visualize over time. The other thing that stood out in the presentation was Canyon Park, and I love that you're delving into Canyon Park at the same time that Public Works is talking about micro-mobility, at the same time that community planning is talking about the SubArea Plan, because all these things are interwoven, and the economic vitality of Canyon Park is essential to that tapestry. So, thanks for getting out ahead of it, and I'm really excited to see what comes.
Councilmember Alderks.
I really appreciate all the effort that you're putting into this role. It's, you know, we knew that we had an exciting opportunity when you came and joined the city, and it's really fantastic to see like where you've gone with it and where you're taking it. You know, the tracker's looking great, glad to see that you haven't encountered any barriers just yet. That could change, and you know, be honest, if you see a barrier, you know, make sure that it's on there. But I just also want to thank you for the work that you've done with the website and putting together the tools that are there. They're, you know, just very welcoming and, you know, making yourself approachable to businesses. Highly recommend to the community to check out the Doing Business section on the city of Bothell website. There's some really great tools and guides there for the community and for business, for business owners and people who are thinking about starting a business. So, thank you for putting that together. When I first joined the Planning Commission, we were talking about Canyon Park. That was the SubArea Plan that we were working on. And it, you know, it was a few years ago now. It's important, I think, for people who have been involved in the plan and in the process to see changes that have occurred in that area and to keep track of like what those ideas and what those plans and what those policies have actually resulted in. And it's exciting that we are at the point of how do we make Canyon Park more, you know, more walkable, a place where people want to be, where it's, you know, it's not just a business park, but it's very much a place where people can live and work and play and visit and shop. And so I think that you're headed in the right direction in thinking along those lines and working on that. It's a great place to go next. So, thank you very much for that effort.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Ashish. I think we've gone a long way since you started and now as a city, as far as economic development in the city. So, I very much appreciate your work and thank you for this. One question that popped in my head when, as you were going through, as I read through the packet before and as you were talking, is as the activity increases, like, you know, the businesses start activating all this, is it possible to have maybe a roundtable with, you know, some businesses, businesses, small and larger, medium, whatever, a range of businesses, just so that we also can hear from them as well, just to have the conversation and so we can just help, you know, see if we can do anything in the future also to help you do your job, you know, better, you know? That's it.
Yeah, on the roundtable point, we've laid some seeds toward that and did a roundtable between city leadership and some large businesses, so that's definitely something that I can follow up with you on.
Wanted to echo the comments of my colleagues up here, especially just Ashish. Like, we really appreciate you being here, like, and we've noticed just an incredible uptick in the work that we're doing since you joined the team, and we appreciate it. I love the work. I love the action tracker as well. I want to second Councilmember Kerd on that, and I'm just looking forward to seeing this work continue to happen. So, thank you.
Well, thank you, Council, and thank you, Ashish. I do want to, just as we wrap this one up and transition to, we do have one board and commission report. Just note that among the other exceptional work that's going on and partnership related to this is just a reminder that Bothell participates in the Startup 425 Program, which is a partnership between Bothell, Bellevue, Issaquah, Retton, Kirkland, and Redmond, and it's focused on supporting early startup businesses, both at the large scale that are going to be looking for venture capital investments, all the way to small businesses. There is an accelerator program that is part of Startup 425 that helps support business owners or potential business owners through that journey. It's a 15-week program where they really develop ideas, and the third cohort of that program is about to graduate next week. We're excited to have four of the 44 participants of that being Bothell-based. So, looking forward to seeing what seeds grow from that investment as well, and we're looking forward to more. With that, we will transition to the board and commission reports, and the Parks and Recreation Board has been committed to providing frequent updates to the city council on a regular cadence. So, tonight is that update. I'm going to welcome our Parks and Recreation Director, Nick Stroup, along with Parks and Recreation Commission Member Laura Borner, who is stepping in to provide the update tonight. So, we'll turn it over to the podium.
Great. Well, welcome and thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and City Council. Tonight, we are joined by Laura Borner, who is one of our Parks and Rec Board members here at the city. For those of you watching, our Parks and Rec Board is made up of nine members, including seven adult positions and two youth positions. Laura's here tonight. She was originally not supposed to be here. Our chairperson, Whitney Naginbauer, was supposed to be here, but she unfortunately double-booked herself. So, Laura agreed to step in tonight, and she's going to give a brief report on the board's actions.
Great. Thank you, Nick. Good evening, Mayor Thompson, Deputy Mayor Alcabra, and Council. My name is Laura Borner, and I serve on the Bothell Parks and Recreation Board. Tonight, I will be presenting the update, as Nick just said. Recently, you appointed three members and appointed two new youth members to the board. We're looking forward to building momentum on exciting parks, projects, and ongoing operations with continuing members and new youth voices and perspectives. The last time you heard from us was at a joint meeting in March. I don't think I was there, but the board reported that it was lovely to connect with you all face-to-face and share ideas and how we can successfully collaborate and communicate to implement your 2040 vision for the community. Thank you for that opportunity. The board looks forward to connecting again, hopefully, and then not to... The board looks forward to connecting again, hopefully in the not-too-far-off future. Since our board's last presentation to you, we have continued to focus on two main projects, the Park of Bothell Landing and the Inclusive Playground Project at Cedar Grove, along with taking on some additional projects. We heard a presentation and gave feedback to the Snohomish County WSU Master Gardeners about a demonstration garden proposal at Centennial Park. The volunteer-led garden would offer educational opportunities to learn about sustainable gardening techniques and offer inspiration. The board felt that this was a great opportunity to partner with a local group. It meets the objectives of council's vision and would further activate a park in the north end of the city. Currently, the city is working through the legal process drafting an interlocal agreement prior to moving forward. Operations Manager Scott Purdy joined the meeting last winter to provide a full overview of operations and updates on recent accomplishments. We learned about how our small crew keeps parks safe and looking beautiful and well-maintained for the community to enjoy. The board provided feedback on turf and leaf maintenance following a discussion about staff health and well-being. During the summer, the board provided feedback and participated in the numerous events, which were all amazingly fantastic, hosted by the Parks Department, including the Fourth of July Parade. Lastly, the board was previously approached by a member of the formal Bothell Parks Foundation regarding leftover funding for a replacement statue at the Doug Allen Sports Fields. The funding was intended to replace a statue of a dog which belonged to the late Doug Allen, an employee of the Parks Department and Bothell resident. Doug passed away tragically in an accident, and a statue of his dog was carved into a stump by a Parks staff person as a memorial. This dog was decorated and enjoyed by the community, especially kids walking to and from the neighboring West Hill Elementary School. Over time, the wood deteriorated and the statue began to crumble and fall apart. A subcommittee worked with the family of Doug Allen to explore options to recreate the statue utilizing the leftover funding from the Bothell Parks Foundation. At the November 18th City Council meeting, John Jacobs, former president of the Bothell Parks Foundation, presented a generous $6,000 donation that fully funds the replacement of the memorial dog statue at the Doug Allen Sports Fields. Just recently, Parks and Rec Board Member Sheila Bracy secured an artist, and together with a small amount of city funds from the Parks Department, this statue project will soon come to fruition. As a board, we're interested in learning more about how city events, including those organized by Parks and Recreation and other departments, can be more effectively communicated to the community. We've had a lot of feedback around this topic from the community themselves. In the past, printed materials like the Bothell Bridge City Magazine served this purpose well, but was discontinued in its magazine-style format during the pandemic. We believe revisiting options such as a periodic print publication and an improved online events calendar could greatly benefit community awareness and participation. We encourage the council to explore these ideas further, keeping in mind both the community impact and environmental considerations, using print materials strategically where they are most effective. Thank you for the opportunity to share today. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Councilmember Dodd.
Thanks for being here, Laura, and I know you were not at the joint meeting, but we found your colleagues delightful as well. It was a great meeting. I wanted to thank you for your work. The statue replacement is just, I feel like it's close to everyone's hearts, especially to people who knew Doug Allen personally, and so thanks for that work and everything you're doing. With regard to the sort of the content sharing that you mentioned with the Bothell Bridge pre-COVID, has your board connected with any of the city's like social media folks? Has there been any sort of crossover to, because I know that's changing as we have more people on our team, so I'm wondering if there's been like a conversation there at this point?
Yeah, I don't think that we have. I think that we've just received feedback from different members of the board who are involved with different areas of the community, be it schools or senior centers or otherwise, that, you know, they're great events, they were amazing events this whole summer, some were led by the city, some by the Parks Department, and not everyone has been hearing about them. So sometimes feedback comes directly to us. So that's kind of where the discussion was generated, but I would love the opportunity, if that makes sense.
Okay. I will ask people about that. I'm just looking at Kyle, but there we go. Thank you. Kyle is people. Thank you so much for being here. Thank you, Mayor, for recognizing me. Jumped in. And I am pleased to hear of the work that you are doing. Excited, I know that Prose Plan is upcoming, and there's going to be lots of conversations around that. And I really appreciate some more of the background about the sculpture, and it sounds like it's going to happen. Do you know like a timeframe on that, if all the funding's been secured?
Twenty-two weeks.
Got the phone-a-friend option here.
Phoning a friend behind me. Twenty-two weeks is the approximate.
Twenty-two weeks.
That is very specific. Thank you.
How many hours?
We start a countdown? That'd be nice. And when it comes to the Bothell Bridge, I think one of the pieces that is most missing is the workshops and classes that used to be part of the Bothell Bridge when we had those programs. And so I wonder if part of the conversation of making it more of like a magazine-style publication is also talking about how do we bring back classes and workshops in the community? And is there the bandwidth in the Parks Department, you know, the staffing to be able to coordinate those again? That might be more of a budget item, but I know that that was a big part of the Parks Department before the pandemic and some of the major cuts we experienced.
Yes, I can't speak to the budget of the Parks and Rec Department directly, but I do know that December 11th, we have a meeting about the park at Bothell Landing, and I think there are some ideas with the new infrastructure that will be there to perhaps bring back some of those classes and whatnot.
Well, that's exciting. You can mention to your colleagues that it was brought up tonight, and I do think that there is appetite in the community to see those brought back.
Yeah, and I think the other, just to add on to that, I think some of the permitting that happens is sometimes done by Parks and Rec, but for certain reasons, we aren't able to help market these events. So there have been some really great multicultural events, like on Main Street and things, that we aren't able to market, but we would love to see the city take that opportunity.
I've experienced that myself. I put out a newsletter ahead of every council meeting, and sometimes I'm having to go to multiple places to find the activities that I know are relevant to our community, that are happening within our community. And if there could be some sharing across organizations and some partnership to where it was like one place, that would be really, I think, fantastic. I especially think of like the Friends of Shiltonview Forest and Whale Scout. Like, there's a lot of community service being done in our community, and if it's in partnership with the parks, I'd love to see it be on the calendar for the city, and so it's easier for people to find and for people to be more aware. So thank you for having those conversations.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Councilmember Curd.
Thanks, Laura, for being here. I hope that you've had a good, you know, participation in journey and the Parks Board, because I know that your colleagues are happy to have you there, too. So thanks for stepping in tonight, even though it wasn't your chask. Couple of quick items. One, kind of piggybacking off of Councilmember Aldrich's comment, is that one of the things that we have in this vision of Bothell is that we have programming. We do events and we celebrate. We come together as a community, and so I think, I'm sure, that the Parks Department has a ribbon-cutting or some sort of gathering plan for the statue unveiling or something. But I would really appreciate if the Parks Board was part of that, the conversation about how it should look, how it's advertised, being there and being present and inviting us to be there, too. That would be amazing. So I can't wait to see what's in store, and I know that it's going to be great. And then the other thing that makes my heart happy is hearing an update about the Master Gardeners Demonstration Garden. I work with Master Gardeners in my day job, and they had approached me with questions about Centennial Park, which was way over my pay grade. So I directed them to Nick, and I'm so glad, because Nick has all the answers. So I know that it's been a long, long journey, but I'm grateful for your Parks Board for hearing their considerations and really looking into what the allowable uses at the park are, looking back at the history of funding the park, all these details that we don't really think about but are really important to get right. So I know that those Master Gardeners are grateful for the opportunity and have had a good engagement with the city so far, too. So kudos to everybody involved, and I can't wait to be at an unveiling of a demonstration garden in the future. So thank you for your participation and volunteering on the board.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to say thank you, Laura, for being here at 7:30 PM on a school night, because I know not everybody signs up for this, so thank you. That's all I wanted to say.
I unfortunately will have to run right after this, because I don't have childcare, so.
Relatable.
Yes.
I wish I had Ray's petition list, so I could just be like, I have some questions. Laura's like, I'm out of here. I quit. No, I just want to say thank you for coming. It was really fun to hear that, and anytime you come here and talk about like pushing events and getting people out and involved in our community, you have my heart, and I really appreciate just that Parks Board's focus and priority on that, and just you coming here tonight. So thank you.
Love that. Thank you so much.
Mayor, to save us an awkward pass, I don't normally kick off council committee reports. I will just note that in tonight's packet, there is a memo from staff to help coordinate the conversation. So as you know, Mayor Thompson and Councilmember Aldrich have been representatives to, sorry, ETP, East Side Transportation Partnership. And in your packet is some information, because recently, ETP, as a committee, approved a state legislative agenda, and so one of the reasons that we do a state legislative agenda and policy manual is so that when things like that come up regionally, you, when you're representing the council, have something to draw from of what do we already know that the council supports. On the federal side, our federal priorities are very project-specific, and so there isn't a broad policy document to draw from. So tonight, in your packet, is a draft federal policy forum, ETP. Your two colleagues will be representing you at the meeting to come, and so we wanted to bring information forward, just in case there's any feedback for the mayor, for Councilmember Aldrichs, to bring back. Steve Marakawa drafted the memo. He also attends in staff support of these meetings, and he's here tonight if you have any questions. But otherwise, really, the intention tonight is if there's anything you'd like to see changed, added, or anything else, or if you have full support, and wanted to make sure that's clear. And you also have your regular council committee reports on this, too, so I don't want to get that lost in the shuffle, but just wanted to put some context around what's in your packet and turn it over to you to have a conversation.
So, do you want to, Councilmember Aldrich, your thing is on.
I'll kick it off just by saying that I appreciate the fulfillment of the request. At our last council meeting, I summarized the legislative priorities that ETP had put together and asked for it to be shared to the council for feedback. And so here it is. You've received it, and I would love to hear feedback so that we can, at our next meeting, share it with our member cities.
No, I mean, I feel like this is pretty well-aligned with like everything that we want to do anyway. There's nothing in here I'm super concerned about. If anybody saw something that they'd like to bring up or any feedback they'd like to give back to ETP, we just wanted to give that opportunity, but if there's not, that's fine, too.
I noticed in the federal priorities, talking about highway funding is always a sensitive topic, because we know that adding more lanes doesn't improve traffic. But I think that the way that it's worded is careful enough, understanding that federal money is what funds 405, which is the east side's backbone. So I approve, but I think it's important to stay involved with ETP to make sure that that conversation is nuanced.
Councilmember Dodd.
Yes, to that, from Councilmember Curd. Also, thank you for getting our feedback in such a specific and targeted way. It has been alarming to me at times when we have someone at like a group like ETP or AWC or whatever three letters you want to put together that says something, and they're clearly talking about their own jam and not what we've agreed upon as a council, so this feels like delightfully intentional and consultative, which is just really nice. So shout out to both of you. And to Steve. Thanks, Steve.
It's mostly Jenny.
Definitely with Steve's backup and support. One of the, that's a really good point about the highways, and I, well, and I don't want to go off on a tangent, but the importance of infrastructure maintenance without actually, without expansion is something that I think our community is also very much aware of. I think we recently saw a comment from the community saying how some of our state roads could be better maintained, and so I think that's a state issue, but when we talk about maintenance and preservation, that can also be part of our legislative priorities, so that we're not experiencing some of the horror stories of, you know, bridges that are 50 years past their usable life and that sort of thing. So thank you for just letting me throw that in there, but I'm currently not at an ETP meeting.
I think one of the things that might be missing from the state transportation needs is kind of safety along overpasses, and, I mean, we've got in Bothell that, I've been harping on this for so long, the bus stops, inline bus stops, and then there, you have to cross an on-ramp, and at the, this is commuting hour at night, it's in the dark, that's really dangerous, and I don't want the conversation from Wash Shop being that we don't have money for that. So maybe including that in a state priority, or I don't know what the conversation is at ETP about other jurisdictions on the east side having this problem, but 405 was constructed in the 50s or 60s, and it shows. So it's time to have a conversation about pedestrian safety and just people's safety on our overpasses and inline stations, and maybe ETP is the place to do that. Thanks.
Not to just be your hype man, Councilmember Curd, but yeah, I think, living in Canyon Park, like I see people end up on the wrong side of the overpass, and they just like cross in the traffic lane instead of crossing and using the sidewalk. Like, there are so many opportunities for harm to befall someone, and just whatever we can do to get consistent, reliable funding to work on those changes would be great. And, yeah, but again, we're not at an ETP meeting, so thank you, Councilmember Aldrich, who is taking copious notes.
And also shout out to Steve. It was like, you really should make sure you're there for this meeting, and like had Catherine get ahold of me, like, oh, okay, like, I'll go. And then I got in the meeting, and they started talking about it, I'm like, I really actually do care about this, and like, I have something to say. It was, it made me chuckle, so thanks, Steve.
Yeah, we can take that back to this meeting.
I wrote down worse notes than you did.
I'm going to move to a different committee.
Yes.
So tomorrow, at the Senior Center, at 4:30, is the Levy Past Celebration, and that's exciting. So go celebrate. There will be treats, I'm pretty sure. If not, I'll buy you something from the coffee bar.
I have an update from the North King County Coalition on Homelessness. We met the week before Thanksgiving and heard updates from cities on their housing policy, but I think the major news was from KCRHA around cold-weather shelters are open, and that's in both King and Snohomish County. And so I think that information has been shared on social media. I'm hoping that maybe our social media team could make sure it's shared out through City of Bothell channels, so that members of our community can be aware of how to find a cold-weather shelter. And I also understand that Lake City Partners' seasonal winter shelter will be opening in the, it's not quite ready yet with the cold weather that we've recently had, but it will be opening in the next month or two, and that will then be open throughout the season. It's probably just a one-year thing. thing with the funding, but it, you know, who knows? Future, future funding might be able to make it, make it continue. And that's basically my update from there. Thank you.
All right. With that, I'll move on to projected agenda discussion. If anybody has something they would like to discuss. And if nobody has anything they'd like to discuss, I would love to accept a motion to approve the consent agenda. Councilmember Aldrichs.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
A motion from Councilmember Aldrichs and a second from Councilmember Dodd. Would anybody like to speak to the motion? Seeing none, City Clerk?
Thank you. Please say yes or no when I call your name. Mayor Thompson?
Yes.
Councilmember Aldrichs?
Yes.
Councilmember Curd?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Alkova?
Yes.
Passes 5-0.
Perfect. All right. Next up is public hearings. We have public hearings. The first one on 2025 miscellaneous code amendments. It's Agenda Bill Number 25212. City Manager?
Thank you, Baron. Yes, we do have two public hearings tonight. Same presenter for both, so you don't have to come back to me. I think we've, I think we've got that covered. But you're going to be hearing from our Community Development Planner, Deb Powers, tonight. The first is a grouping of code updates for 2025 titled Miscellaneous Code Amendments. And that is where we'll be starting from tonight. Again, council has heard in study session on both of these topics tonight is opportunity to hear from the community. So with that, I will turn things over to Deb to walk you through the first of the two public hearings.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Thompson, members of the council, Deb Powers from Planning. Tonight, we'll be going over first the miscellaneous code amendments. There are the 2025 amendments for the Bothell Municipal Code. And as a, just as a reminder, the purpose of the meeting is to hold a public hearing on these draft miscellaneous code amendments. We'll briefly review the code revisions and Planning Commission's findings and conclusions before pausing for the public hearing. So most of these that have been presented in your packet are code amendments that are basically housekeeping items. They're resulting from the policy changes that were associated with the 2024 Comprehensive Plan Periodic Review and the subsequent zoning and development code updates. That's why all of the code amendments are in BMC Chapter 12. That's the zoning and development code chapter. And the purpose of them is, you know, as housekeeping items to further clarify, streamline the code for its application by all code users. While we're waiting for the agenda item to come up, I counted 72 lines that have been struck, or that are markouts for all of these revisions, and probably about three to five lines of added code language. So it's definitely efforts to streamline the code there. So in, there's like basically three buckets of the zoning code or Chapter 12 that are where these code amendments fall under. Under the residential area and dimensions, the, most of those revisions are just consistency with the middle housing and medium density policies that were adopted recently with the periodic comp plan update. And to also address heights, where they're currently shown building heights in another chapter in 1214130 in a table. So it's just be consistent with what's shown in that table. Under the Planned Unit Development section of the zoning code, or Chapter 12, most of those revisions are just consistent use of terminology instead of using single family, using low density, added clarifications to the low and medium density residential development, and then just cleanup, like due to the no parking minimums there. And then under the subarea updates, that's where the bulk of the revisions were, or the draft code amendments are. And those are, I'd say, generally speaking, for the same reasons as code consistency, code cleanup, just reducing some redundancies, and then, and looking at now codes that are obsolete, just striking those, like with the parking minimums. So in light of the hour of the evening, we'll, I'll just summarize that, the Planning Commission, like following the, their findings were following the 2024 Comprehensive Plan and related municipal code updates. Staff and applicants found additional code language applying the code that was obsolete or inconsistent or unclear. That's why these, why we're looking at these revisions now, and that the proposed amendments were properly noticed and necessary and in the best interest of public health, safety, and welfare. So with that, I will turn things over to Mayor Thompson to conduct the public hearing.
All right. I am going to open the public hearing. Shazam. City Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor Thompson. We do have one person in the virtual audience who wishes to speak. I'm going to panel Mr. Swanson in. And if anybody is in the audience who wishes to speak to this public hearing, please step to the podium after Mr. Swanson's done. You'll have three minutes. Mr. Swanson, can you hear me?
I can, Laura. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead. You'll have three minutes.
There are two things that caught my eye regarding this streamlining. First thing is we went from four residences on a plot of land to 30. Now, that's four driveways to 30 driveways, or an extensive parking lot, even with parking minimums, and the demand on neighborhoods for on-street parking. But what's critical to me about that is there is a determination of nonsignificance. Well, when you're putting a lot of extra pavement around town, that's heating up the streams. It's heating up the Snohomish River. It goes directly against the climate plan and the recommendations of the Department of Ecology. SEPA is not going to pay attention to objecting to a determination of nonsignificance. Quite frankly, I think that's unfair to the residents of Bothell. And I personally think it's highly dishonest. The other part of this is that reducing setbacks and allowing increased heights with flat top roofs, this is taking sunshine away. And sunshine is a commodity. You can easily have a building go up next door that'll completely destroy the ability to have a garden in your backyard, or even to watch your perennials come up in the spring. It'll kill the rhododendron. I speak from firsthand experience of this. And so when you guys do this, and you allow these reduced setbacks, reduced parking thresholds, and allow flat-top buildings to encroach ever closely to backyards, that's cutting down on the sunshine and the usability of a person's property. In fact, it even falls under the public trust doctrine that the Shorelines Management Act stems from. Now, I think the Bothell City Council needs to consider sunshine. On December 21st, the highest the sun gets in the sky is only 16 degrees. A 30-foot building is going to cast a shadow for 300 feet, and that's the shortest the shadow will be all day. You guys got to start considering shade and shadow, not just urban density. I've had enough of the progressive urbanists in this place.
Thank you, Mr. Swanson. Thank you. Your time is up. Thank you. Sorry. That is all I have. Does anybody else wish to speak? Please step to the podium. State your name for the record.
Okay, Micah Campbell here again. I'd just like to say I agree with what Mr. Swanson says. I think it's pretty clear. That's just, what he said is very basic. I think all of you folks can understand it. So I think if you take some of those ideas into account, and that would be really important to do with your considerations. Thank you. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. That is all I have.
All right. In that case, I will close the public hearing. And I think we're going to move on to the next one. It is Agenda Bill 25213, the 2025 City Initiated Annual Comprehensive Plan Amendments.
Okay. Again, the purpose of this meeting is to hold a public hearing on the draft annual, annual comprehensive plan amendments. And as, to be differentiated from the periodic ones that we just adopted in 2024. Those are, so they're already allowed six units in the residential medium land use designations. So they need to bump up to six units. And the, so we needed to bump up to six units in the RL, or the residential low designations. So that was in two places in the comprehensive plan. Here in the land use element text is where that revision occurred. Also, under the table Exhibit 29, in, under the residential low table category, where it was bumped up from four to six. And then also in, well, under residential conservation designations, we also wanted to allow up to four middle housing units there. So it's in that same table in Exhibit 29. That's where that revision was, was made. And to provide some context, and where that is in the city, the residential medium density is in the darker, the darker orange areas. Residential low density is that golden yellow, which is like, probably the primary land use designations. And then the residential conservation is that pale cream, really been very limited, but concentrated areas there. And with that, I will hand it over to Mayor Thompson to conduct a public hearing.
I will open the public hearing. City Clerk, do we have anybody signed up?
We do not. If anybody in the audience wishes to speak, please step to the podium. State your name. You'll have three minutes. I do not have anybody. Wait, Mr. Swanson would like to speak just a moment. Mr. Swanson, can you hear me?
I can, City Clerk. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead. You'll have three minutes.
Well, there's nothing new here. I'm glad I got to speak three times tonight to make my point, even though it falls on deaf ears. I think I'm pretty reasonable. The, the city is doing everything it can to increase CO2. Now, I'm not concerned about CO2. But when you are forcing people into buses, as you're doing, a city bus has to be at 30% capacity on average, both with traffic and against it, 24/7 for all routes. Otherwise, a single-family gasoline car carrying one person produces less CO2. You're, in my opinion, not being impartial. And you're not exercising your fiduciary responsibility. You're giving away our culture, and our character, and our neighborhoods by depriving us of parking, forcing homeowners to subsidize through frontage regulations or fee waivers for infill development, cutting down our trees, depriving us of near infrared light, which is a health benefit. I don't know what, what's going, what it's going to take. Are you guys begging for a lawsuit? Are you begging for a class action lawsuit? Is that what you're waiting for? You ignore the science. You're politically driven. And that's got to stop.
Thank you. Do not have anybody else signed up to speak.
In that case, I will close the public hearing. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. We did ordinances and resolutions. We did the resolution. I'm going to move on to 2025, 2026 Mid-Biennium Budget Amendments. City Manager?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. And yes, as we, we did complete the first item, we are brought to another thing that we can think about a year ago, which was when council adopted the 2025-26 budget. I think it's always been my speaking points of, we just know that as soon as we adopt a budget, it's already incorrect. And fortunately, though, that's why we have a great financial team who can make course corrections throughout the years. But also, there are some times when there's more technical adjustments that need to be brought forward. So that's what we're doing tonight. Council has been hearing about this over the fall. And to get us to the finish line, we are joined by Kwan Wong, our Finance Director, and Andrew Wachong, our Deputy Director. I'll turn it over to them.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council members. We're here to present the 2025-2026 Mid-Biennium Budget Amendment. Council action requested tonight is for you to consider adopting the 2025-26 Mid-Biennium Budget Amendment. As City Manager had mentioned, we have been before you twice already. In October 14th, we held study session to discuss the budget amendments and take council feedback. October 21st, we held the public hearing. And tonight, we are requesting your consideration for adopting the mid-bi budget amendments. Just as a reminder, summary of the items, they fall into two categories, general fund operating adjustments and capital project and program amendments. The general fund operating adjustments include a budget, a transfer to the budget stabilization rainy day fund, the beginning of spending the opioid solvent funding, and a correction to a missed item for low-income utility assistance. The capital program, project and program amendments are for budget updates where costs have increased, schedule updates where previously adopted budget for projects that have not been completed are being moved forward to this biennium, and shop one site replacement for a new site, as the previous one was unsuitable. That's been fully reimbursed by the state. Again, council action requested tonight is your consideration for adoption of the 25-26 Mid-Biennium Budget Amendments. If you have any answer, any questions, if you have them.
I don't have any questions, mainly because you have so thoroughly explained it in the previous opportunities we've had. And so I would like to motion to adopt the 2025-2026 Mid-Biennium Budget Amendments.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Aldrichs and a second from Councilmember Dodd. Would anybody like to speak to the motion? I will just say thank you for a very boring mid-bi. We appreciate it very much. City Clerk?
Thank you. Please say yes or no when I call your name. Mayor Thompson?
Yes.
Councilmember Aldrichs?
Yes.
Councilmember Curd?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor?
Yes.
Passes 5-0.
Thank you. All right. Moving on to Agenda Bill 25216, the Critical Areas Ordinance and SEPA Threshold Ordinance Code Updates.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Yes, it's decision night, so this is the final, final item on your agenda for action tonight. And council has been informed and brought information about the Critical Areas Ordinance over the past several months. Again, this is a requirement for council to consider here in 2025. Tonight, you've also heard some comments, so I'm sure you may have some questions. Fortunately, we are joined by the right staff to walk us through. So Community Development Planner Jacqueline Sampson is here, and she is also joined by our Community Development Deputy Director, Christian Getz, who will walk us through the presentation and be able to field questions. So with that, I'll turn it over to our team.
Hello, City Council. Tonight, we're going to be talking about the final ordinance for Critical Areas Ordinance as well as the SEPA update. Tonight, City Council will consider adoption of the Critical Areas Ordinance and SEPA Threshold Updates Ordinance. So to provide some background information, this update is part of our regular cycle under the Growth Management Act, which requires the city to complete its next Critical Areas Ordinance by December 31st. Fausset completed a gap analysis for the city back in December 2024, which helped inform the revisions that you're seeing today. Since then, staff has held multiple touchpoints with both Planning Commission as well as City Council. We began with an initial study session with the Planning Commission on July 16th, followed by study sessions with City Council on September 9th. The Planning Commissioner then reviewed the draft code again on September 17th, and City Council held another study session on October 7th. On October 15th, the Planning Commission voted to approve the final findings, conclusions, and recommendations with revision. And then council then held a public hearing on October 21st. And we're back tonight, bringing forward the final ordinance for your consideration. So a summary of the updates for stream buffers, a replacement of the language of stream buffers to riparian management zones. I would like to highlight that in the Agenda Bill packet you had tonight, on page 400, the table stated a standard riparian management zone width of 125 feet for type F streams. And on page 401, under 1404930D4, state that the riparian management zone may be decreased to a minimum 100-foot width. The text from the original draft code did not get updated since the last meeting or since the last conversations with council. And I would like to clarify for the record that the standard riparian management zone width for type F streams are 175 feet, with opportunity to go down to 150 if vegetative buffer standards aren't met. Staff will fix this error for the proposed code. For type N streams, they remain at 115 feet, with opportunity to go down to 100 feet if vegetative buffer standards are met. Reasonable use exceptions. We incorporate WDFW's best available science by adding requirements for our neighborhood land analysis in a reasonable use report. We also remove the previously proposed maximum disturbance areas limits. For vegetative buffer standards, we added new standards for both wetland and stream buffers, as recommended by WDFW. And the, oh, and we also removed variance mechanisms as recommended by WDFW for best available science. So property owners will then rely on the existing RUE code and buffer averaging provisions to provide flexibility when maintaining ecological protections. We expanded non-conformant standards, and we updated code in accordance to Ecology's comments from October 20th, 2025. These updates reflect Ecology's technical comments from October 20th. There are minor corrections, such as using the exact GMA definition for wetland, updating references to the current wetland rating system, and clarifying how mitigation requirements align across sections. We've incorporated those corrections to ensure accuracy and consistency. Lastly, we, following adjustments with City Council and Planning Commission, staff developed code amendments to raise Bothell's current SEPA thresholds to the maximum levels allowed under WAC 197 11800. So now I turn it back to you, Mayor Thompson, for council action tonight, where you will consider adoption of the Critical Areas Ordinance and SEPA Threshold Updates Ordinance.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you so much for the work. It's been a journey, I guess. We've heard, I, it's a lot of work, and, you know, we just heard today at least three public comments addressing this very boring yet very important topic. And I was wondering if you have any, because we're hearing, you know, comment, but we want to hear what, we don't have a chance to discuss those live, so I want to see if you guys have any response to those, to those issues that got brought up.
I could speak to the comments regarding effectiveness. So an ordinance can be effective no sooner than five days after adoption. And in this case, it must be effective by the 31st of this year to align with the GMA update requirements, which is a year after the comp plan work. So it'd be a decision for council how you'd want to pursue that. We will follow, we'll follow that guidance. We can make it effective at least starting on, what, Monday? Or the 31st for applications applying in the new year?
I think if there's no, for that particular topic, if there, the question, if there's no harm, if the city, there's no, yeah, no harm, you know, for moving, for doing that, then I would propose that we wait, have the adoption be the 31st, if that's okay with my colleagues. That addresses one of the public comments question. And there was the one that Ms. Agard brought up, and there was a couple, two or three things that she mentioned. Are those all related to each other?
The primary comment was around what Jacqueline clarified on the 175 being necessary. The information in the, in the staff report, the attached report regarding the FEMA table, that table with the curves within it. It identifies, it's a generalized concept that Fish and Wildlife was using in their, in their guidance for how to apply the site potential tree height. And going back through those generalized assessments, back to the 93 report, anywhere, somewhere around 100 feet is where the benefit, the immediate benefit falls off for many of those factors, including water quality, from root strength to litter fall to shading. So what we're proposing provides, you know, both the standard buffer and the reduced buffer for type N or type F streams, meets those generalized approaches. In addition, it creates, you know, better habitat function, because they are, they are growing. And in the staff report, we identified the percentage of increase. The goal of the, of the GMA is to protect, not enhance. We believe that we're departing from the full site potential tree height approach and still protecting the environment.
Okay, thank you. And the third one, and it looks like Councilmember Kurt wants to have his own, his own questions. So the third one is the project that we also heard about.
Yeah, the removal of the variance was a very clear recommendation from Fish and Wildlife. The code has other flexibilities, whether that's buffer modification or buffer averaging. So shrink the buffer here, grow the buffer there, alike for like, or a reasonable use, the reasonable use exception, which we didn't, we didn't make that any more onerous. We made it more clear as far as providing, you know, assessments of what's adjoining, so you can get better apples-to-apples comparison of a site that is encumbered versus a site that's already developed. How could you evaluate that? So we believe that the code still provides that, that clarity, and staff will work with, with developers through, through that, as we have in the past.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Councilmember Kurt?
Thanks. Thank you for the presentation and for all of the presentations that you give in the past couple of months. I want to summarize some things, just so that I can check my understanding. These new, or this new ordinance will extend protections to greater areas around streams. Not the big streams like Sammamish River or North Greek, but smaller streams throughout the city. So if you had a property that was kind of encumbered, or it was difficult to build on because of streams, and, but it was doable, and then after these, this ordinance comes into effect, and maybe it was, the buffer was 100 feet, and now the riparian management zone is going to be 175. That's a greater protection, and it's going to increase the water quality, that is going to improve water quality and the health of our environment. But that's coming at the cost of reduced ability to build. And so if that property is really tricky, and the building footprint just doesn't fit with the 175-foot buffer, we're talking about this reasonable use exception now, instead of an old, older variance kind of form of, we, you know, someone, the applicant would say, well, I can't do this, so I want a variance, I want something to be able to be built here. What is the difference between the variance process and the reasonable use exception?
They're, they work in, they work simultaneously, in effect. If a reasonable use was deemed not possible, that's where the variance would come in to create greater flexibility. Very few codes have a reasonable use exception and a variance. The reasonable use exception is the method to develop an encumbered site that has a buffer that is currently, or it, or a future buffer extends to preclude or prevent, as the code is written, development. So it allows for a science-based approach to have a biologist assess the property, assess what's being proposed, identify how the mitigation will offset those impacts for building footprints, driveways, access points, all of those things. It is then peer-reviewed by a city biologist that we hire to do that, to make sure that it's all, you know, on the up and up with how much mitigation has to happen, either onsite, or if it's really encumbered, it has to be out in the right-of-way or off-site. So there's, there's still the mechanism to do that, and the variance was another, was another tool in the, in the toolbox that was very rarely used here. And through the, through the tools that are out there within the code, whether it's buffer averaging or reasonable use exception, staff believe that there's still the opportunity to do that, to do that work. And there are very few, few sites that would, would have those really large encumbered wetland or stream buffers out there.
Yeah. So being super clear, that we're not taking away the right of someone to investigate further and work on that property, just because we're passing the ordinance tonight.
Correct.
Thank you. In that vein, I think that the whole reason that we're doing this Critical Area Ordinance update is to enhance water quality, to make it better for the environment. And so it brings a lot of questions to me, why someone would want to get in just before the strike of midnight. What, I'm not comfortable delaying these enhancements, just because someone wants to degrade the environment. And there may be public benefits, but we have a system of public benefits set out in our bike plan, in our pedestrian plans, in our public works right-of-way enhancements. And so I feel like making exceptions at this late hour sets a really unusual and uncomfortable precedent on why we're, why the heart of these Critical Area Ordinance is really needed. And, you know, maybe it's because I'm in the RIAT meetings all the time, and I hear about the horrific water quality in our streams and river. But this, this isn't, the whole findings, conclusions, and recommendations about the Critical Area regulations is in line with our council vision of a healthy environment. So I feel like making exceptions for projects that we really don't know the whole story at this late hour would set a bad precedent. So I'm not in favor of that. Thanks for answering my questions, and I'll turn it over to my colleagues.
Councilmember Dodd?
Thanks. Thank you for the presentation and all the work that's gone into this. I had a question. There was a project mentioned on 9th, and I just wanted like a sanity check on that. We got an email, and then there was a public comment about public good coming from it. Are they doing more than what we require through our frontage improvements?
The frontage improvements would be the required.
Okay.
Established under the code.
Gotcha.
The design standards, yeah.
I just wasn't sure why that was brought up so much in the correspondence. I appreciate it. I'm leaning toward not pushing this out any further. It does set, in my mind, a pretty poor precedent that we would last minute say, oh, wait, you just hadn't gotten there yet, when these are supposed to protect our environment, which is also a pretty firm public good. So in shorter words, I think I'm at the same place as Councilmember Kurt.
Councilmember Aldrichs?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for all of the thought and effort and energy that was put into these updates. As, as my colleagues, you know, have reiterated, the environment, our environmental goals are very central to, to our vision priorities. And so while this is a required update that is part of a routine process, it's important for our updates to reflect best science, comply with legal expectations, and also align with our vision. And so I know that you have worked very hard to make sure that all of those things are in balance with one another. I appreciate the additional explanation around the reasonable use exemption as a mechanism by which property owners can, can, you know, petition for, for exceptions for their property. And when it comes to the, the, when this goes into effect and delaying that, I am of two minds, and I see both as valid ways to go forward. It is standard to, you know, have something go into effect five days after it's been approved. That's a very routine thing to do. It gets a little weird when we're so close to the end of the year. And, and I think, you know, what holiday schedules are like and all of that. And so to put something that needs to be approved at the end of the year, on the end of the year, I feel like allows for more, like, routine adoption of, of things. And so I think that I, I can second the deputy mayor's proposal in regards to, like, just aligning it with, you know, here's the rules in 2025. In 2026, we've got new rules. And so I think I am, I am fine with, with that as an option.
You guys would need to make a motion and second it.
Well, give me a chance.
Sure.
Yeah. How long have we been working on the Critical Areas Ordinance? It's been about six months. First study session with Planning Commission was back in July. Okay. So this isn't like, this isn't new. This isn't something that we just decided to do last month, and now we're doing this month. Like, the process has been ongoing for, well, six months. Correct, yeah. And even though we're removing the variance process, it sounds like buffer averaging and reasonable use exceptions are different ways that we can look to accommodate, to see the kind of building we want in Bothell. Yes. Correct? Correct. Okay. So it's simply a different path rather than a, rather than a hard no. I, I mean, we've been working on this for quite some time. This isn't the first time that we've had somebody come and ask us to delay something. We had the comp plan last year. We had the comp plan last year, people asking us to delay the vote because they didn't want to see additional building in Bothell. And I feel like it's really important to just do what we think is the right thing to do. And I think protecting critical areas is the right thing to do. These issues where half of the commenters think we're going too far, and half of the commenters think we're not going far enough are always interesting. And I think at that point, like, I trust the work that we've done over the last six months and all the touchpoints that we had, and I'm comfortable adopting this tonight.
Mayor, prior to any motions starting to go on the table, I do want to note that there are two separate actions in here. And on this slide, there's a, it kind of combines the two actions. But I'd like to suggest that council considers the two actions separately. So the first one would be asking for a motion to adopt the ordinance amending BMC 1404, the Critical Areas Regulations. That includes the clarification, or the correction that was noted by staff. And I think if this was, if there was going to be an entertained motion about amending the effective date, I think it would be to this first one or to both? Yeah, to the first. The second action then would be a motion to adopt the ordinance amending BMC 1402, the State Environmental Policy Act. So if there is any consideration of a change in effective date, separating these two will allow you to apply that to Bothell Municipal Code, Chapter 1404. I can say it again if you need me to.
I think I'm good. Thank you. And I will just open it up to my colleagues for a motion of some sort. Unless you got a question? Go ahead.
City manager, you, I'm trying to find the motions, the BMCs.
Yeah, at the bottom of page 298 is the recommended action as written in the packet. And so you'll see it's kind of separated into two things. So the first part is that BMC, Chapter 1404, Critical Area Regulations.
Is it, well, I will move to, let's do the easy one first. I will move to adopt ordinance amending BMC, Chapter 1402, State Environmental Policy Act.
I have a motion from the deputy mayor and a second from Councilmember Kurt. Would anybody like to speak to the motion? Seeing none? City clerk?
Please say yes or no when I state your name. Mayor Thompson?
Yes.
Councilmember Alderks?
Yes.
Councilmember Kurt?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Alcabra?
Yes.
Passes five zero.
Okay, I will move to amend the ordinance amending BMC 1404, Critical Area Regulations, is to move the date to the 31st.
The effective date.
Effective date to 12/31/2025.
I have a motion from deputy mayor and a second from Councilmember Alderks. Would anybody like to speak to the motion? Yeah, deputy mayor, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I am, this is one of the things that, it's not, at the end of the day, it's not the hill that I am going to die on, you know? But I feel like it's the end of the year, there's a project in motion, 20 days is not going to make a big difference in a project that's already in motion, and I feel a little bit of leniency. I understand the slippery slope argument, but I don't, I did not, I don't think it's that in this particular case. But then again, I mean, we're an odd number here, so we can go, the decision is going to be made, you know, at that time.
The body will decide.
The body will decide, indeed.
All right, city clerk?
Please say yes or no when I call your name. Mayor Thompson?
No.
Councilmember Alderks? Councilmember Kurt?
No.
Councilmember Dodd?
No.
Deputy Mayor Alcabra?
Yes. Why do we even bother?
Fails three to two.
Councilmember Kurt?
I move to adopt the ordinance amending BMC, Chapter 1404, Critical Areas Regulations.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Kurt and a second from Councilmember Dodd. Would anybody like to speak to the motion? City clerk?
Thank you. Please say yes or no when I call your name. Mayor Thompson?
Yes.
Councilmember Alderks?
Yes.
Councilmember Kurt?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Alcabra?
Yes.
Passes five zero.
Already did the other one. So with that, we're adjourned.